Educating, informing, serving. TV, keeping government honest.
Call this meeting to order 5:30. What's the date, January 19th? Rockingham School Board Budget Discussions. Sorry. Jason Benson, you'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, sir. Any adjustments to the agenda? I guess it would have been good to wait for Flora. I've got just one comment. Chris, we haven't seen a minutes from the last couple of meetings to approve. Are those? Those are even for special meetings, I believe there's minutes taken, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so maybe we'll just want to get to those for our next meeting and we can approve.
Yeah, you'll have them for the next meeting because the most of the meetings have been very close together.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, so we'll look for that next time. Any other adjustments?
I have no other.
All right. Any communications and public comment? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to just point out, as some members may be aware, and some members, if you're newer, may not be aware, in the past, the Department of Education and the Agency of Education have produced revenue forecast to guide school boards in their budgeting process so they have some sense of what the impact will be on taxpayers. And I take note with a certain amount of irony that the Rockingham budget, which I believe is in excess of $10 million, is currently showing about a $2 million surplus right at the moment. And ironically, the high school, which is a $7.4 million budget, has $200,000 round numbers in surplus. Now, I'm mentioning this for a reason, and that is that Chris Pratt sent around an item called H548, which apparently is a bill that's been passed and signed by the governor and the legislature that will allow municipalities, and that includes school boards, to postpone their meetings till later in the year. And the ostensible purpose of that is to protect the public, who, like a lot of us, are used to town meeting-style decision-making, so that perhaps that can occur in a safer environment. Now, I would like to point out that there's a secondary advantage to postponing meetings, and that is that we might actually have a picture of what revenues do in fact look like. And I have deep concerns for the Union High School that producing a budget which is not reflective of the taxpayer's ability to pay might in fact meet with rejection, which would cause us to have to sharpen our knives and start pairing that budget. I will also further point out that in Brattleboro, school budget's set in June, which is also allowable, I believe, under Act 48 or H48. And I would simply like to throw that into the mix for Rockingham tonight. You certainly have a sizable budget surplus which you can use to reduce taxation. But I will point out that one downside of using too much to reduce taxation is your taxpayers are likely to get walloped in the following year. So I think Chris Pratt may be able to provide more detail on how H48 works on a practical basis. But I think you need to be aware that you are not under an ironclad deadline to set a date tonight unless you feel that you need to line up with your select board in Rockingham, which I think is also studying the same situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. It's a great points. We did receive that email from Chris. And I guess that's probably a good, maybe a good place to start. But before we keep going, any more communications, public comments? I'm hearing none. So getting right into item five, FY22 Budget Review. What? I guess, Chris, this is a question maybe more for you. I don't. Do we need to align with the town at this point? Or? So David made one good point, more than one good point, but the one that I'm adhering to, kind of grabbed onto, is that we'd have a better idea of what the final number would be if we didn't postpone any final decision-making. Is? Can you kind of bring me up to speed, bring the board up to speed? Is that even really a possibility, or is that something that needs to be set by the town?
Well, no, I mean, you could always, you know, sometimes do have that separate vote, the town votes on certain things, and just like during Town Meeting Day, then they propose the school portion of it on a different day, similar to what the Union Elementary School District did last year. The town voted on the stuff they needed to vote on, and later on down the road, when they were prepared to do so, they put another vote in. You know, my question is, and I don't know enough about it right now to get into specifics regards to H48, but I'm assuming, you know, not doing it hand-in-hand with the town could be a little more costly. But, you know, right now, based on H48, which, for those of you who don't know, it's an act relating to authorizing alternative procedures in 2021 for municipal meetings, and it's a response to COVID-19 that we're seeing. So it was just passed in the Senate. I just got this today, so I'm not really, you know, prepared to say what kind of effects that would have if, you know, we didn't vote the same time as on Town Meeting Day. But I think the board, you know, needs to, you know, do what's best for trying to get accurate numbers. And Mr. Clark is correct, where, you know, some places are waiting a little longer until we can get those numbers back out from the state so we can make those adjustments. But I would still be looking tonight for the, once we get into that discussion, is looking to approve a budget, and then based on when, you know, it goes to vote, that's something we'd have to talk about more when I have more of a chance to go through Act 48.
Thanks. So I guess if it's all right with other board members. And I think we can ask this question again a little bit later on. Maybe it'll become apparent what the right course of action would be. Maybe we could, I'm thinking we kind of go through the motions here and kind of decide toward the end whether we want to approve this, or if we want to approve it and then wait to decide surplus allocations. So that's kind of where I'm at. If nobody has any objections, I'd kind of like to go through and talk about what the 1.5% looks like and what the implications are specifically to the students, and kind of see how it goes, if that's, if that's okay with everybody else. Feel free to chime in with objections. Hearing none. All right, well, let's get right into it then. So we got a, another budget that was decreased by 1.5%, as was asked by the board. So as far as I can see it, we're looking at two budgets, one that is, I'm going to call it level funded. It was hundreds off from previous year, so I'm going to call that level funded, and then 1% decrease. So those.
We decreased it by one. You, the board directed us to go 1.5%.
Yeah, 1.5. Now, that was a mistake on my part, yeah, 1.5. So I'd still like to look at those and talk about those, and at this point, I guess I'll leave it to, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so the, I would say that, you know, after I speak is that we give each principal the opportunity to discuss what these, the 1.5% budget decrease to the Rockingham budget, which I think we saw it was around $167,000 less. To let the board know and the public know exactly what that would be impacting, I know, you know, speaking to the administration on this, we still fully support the proposed budget that was given to the board at our last meeting. I feel that the amount of money that were cut into the budget, you're looking at around 1.2% of, I mean, 1.2 cents on education tax dollar. And my opinion is, is that, that money, I don't feel that that money is worth the savings of the 1.2 cents, because we're really, I think we're at the point right now in this budget here, is that we've taken all the meat off the bone. And if we go as far as breaking the bone, then it's going to be tough to repair. So I would urge the board to ask your principals the questions in regards to what they support, what their cuts mean to the students and the learners in Rockingham, and then take it from there.
I think that sounds like a fine idea. I don't think a good portion of it came from Saxon's River. Was that my understanding? So Laura, why don't you go ahead if you're, if you're ready to go? You can start with basically looking at what changes were made from the level-funded budget, we'll call it, and the 1.5% and how that impacts your school, your students, et cetera. You're muted.
You think I'd get it after all these months, right? Gosh, happens every now and then, though. Um, okay, so we met as a team shortly after the last board meeting, and really went through again with a fine-tooth comb, and there were a few adjustments that I made in the Saxon's River budget. One, one was to subtract 7,755 from the capital projects. If you remember, last time I had told the board that I would be looking for anything that I could take from that would not directly impact students, and so that is what I did exactly. So that was a chunk there. Also, Ricky had informed us that we could subtract the tech rentals, that that was not, that there would be a final payment in May, and he did not anticipate that there would be a new payment due thereafter. So that's another 2,060 from tech rentals. And then we took a look at the salary section, and what we noticed was there was a small oversight, because when the SU budget didn't include part of the tech salary, we had to include that in the Rockingham budget, and so there was an addition of 4,092. And at the same time, looking at the regular ed para-budget and the current contract, and the anticipated contract would be less than projected, so that was a savings there of 8,752, which you'll notice that there's a difference of, what is it? 4,000 something? I don't, I, well, you have it right in front of you, and so do I. So what is that? Let me see if I can see it. 4,500 or something like that? My screen is too small, and I need my glasses. Thank you, Flora, or Chris. Yeah, 4,560. The rest of the changes stayed, and I explained those at the last board meeting, but I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions for Laura? So at this point, I'm seeing no real impact to student educational and emotional experience. Is that accurate?
That was my goal.
Excellent. Thank you. Last call. Any questions, comments for Ms. Hazard? Very good, thank you. Ms. Kennedy, I think I saw you in here somewhere. Yep, there you are. Hi.
How are you? Good evening. So we have a little bit different situation for ours, because, as I've mentioned, an educational programming situation for students in CLC under our miscellaneous. And so that, unfortunately for the taxpayers, is not something that we have a lot of control over, but for the students' needs, it's what needs to be done. So there was not a lot of wiggle room, unfortunately, in the central budget to play around with some variance. So we were able to look around at a few line items in looking at technology, and, you know, and also our capital projects as well. And so we were able to reduce a little bit there, but there was not a lot of wiggle room that we had, unfortunately. So there's not a lot of positives to share, like Saxon's River had some places to take from. The specifics, you know, we can, you know, worked a lot with Ricky from technology. What we had in place is really what we needed, so we were able to look at some of the Promethean Boards, Chromebooks, some of the questions that came up from the last meeting, just to address as well, was some of the encumbrances that has not been spent down, and so it has been earmarked, but because of a back order from some of the technology from the beginning of the year, we're hoping to get those orders in soon, but they had not been able to be placed. So Chromebooks were on a halt across the country, because I think everybody in the country was also ordering Chromebooks as well. So there were some that we needed to replace. So there's actually not a lot that I can speak to for some changes that we did make for our budget.
Okay, so I'll ask you the same question. Any, the changes that were made, or did any of that affect the students' educational or emotional experience?
Not so much for that, more of capital projects, which it sounds like may be able to be covered from some of the contingencies before, and also technology, we're really, you know, trying to make sure that we're ordering things from this year's budget for this year, and then looking for next year to see if there's any areas that would affect it. So other than student programming, which was covered under that change, there's not a lot that would completely affect the students.
Okay, so I don't have both budgets up in front of me. What's the difference in, not necessarily just for you, for anybody, Flora, maybe, what's the difference in budget for Central Elementary? Understanding that there was that increase for the student need.
Sure.
Yeah.
I just want to see if I have that in front of me.
You want like the bottom line?
Yes.
Yeah, just looking at the first, yeah.
So the budget was before 5,247. Now it went down, so the difference is like $9,702.
Most of which came from capital.
So say that one more time, Flora, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me use my calculator to be exact with the number.
Okay. 9,949 was reduced from the level-funded budget to this budget.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm going to back up a quick second just to make sure I got my number right. In Saxon's River, that was 4,560?
Let me check that, I'm sorry.
That's, thank you.
George, are you specifically referring to the change from last time to this time? Or what is it that you're specifically referring to?
I guess that's one way to put it. The difference from the level-funded budget that we saw at the last meeting versus the, versus the latest minus 1.5% budget that was asked for.
So for Saxon River was an extra $3,298.
So that was plus 3,298?
Yes.
Wait, wait, wait a second, Flora. Are you saying?
It was deducted.
So you guys had adjusted already $26,000, and with the extra $3,000 brings you down to the 29,466 that you guys adjusted.
I think, I think, and I may have added some confusion here. I think what I'm looking for is the difference, so that 163, whatever it was total, what does each school's part in that, is what, is what I mean. So it sounds like. Sorry, I'm not asking very clearly, I don't think.
What you're looking for is the difference from last budget to this budget in regards to what was the overall additional amount cut from each school?
Yes.
Yes, so Saxon River adjusted an extra $3,298.
Got it.
I think.
Flora, go ahead.
I think we might be calculating a little difficult differently, because I have 14,975.
So I have you guys that you were down $26,168. Now you're down to $29,466.
Okay, I think we're just looking at it through a different lens. I'm going to defer to Flora.
Okay. And then Central is 9,949. So that means that the middle school made an additional cut of $150,000? That doesn't make sense.
No, so that's from each school, but then we cut overall the contingency funds that was an overall bucket. That wasn't allocated to each of the schools.
Okay, so after the schools plus the cut to the contingency fund, that's where we're going to get that total.
To the 163.
Yep.
320.
All right, now, now I'm up to speed.
Can you see my screen?
I can, I just don't have the other one for, as a comparison, so that's why I was.
Okay, so.
Right, but that makes sense now, that makes sense now. I think that, I think it makes sense.
It gives you each adjustment, new adjustments for the schools.
Okay. Ms. Bukowski, welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
So first of all, I made $5,000 cut where I decreased, took out of COVID supplies, once we knew we would be expecting that to be picked up by the latest round of the COVID relief funds. That was before the school board asked for this latest 1.5% deduction. The cuts now in the 1.5%, the tech rentals were taken out for the same reason that Laura Hazard outlined, and also we've cut 50% out of our extracurricular budget, which amounts to $7,149.
7,149?
Correct.
Thank you.
Those are the cuts that were made. As you know, in my original budget, I had already made some significant cuts.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. And the tech rentals ballpark, what was that looking like?
Flora, I apologize. Can you help me out here? I think it was pretty substantial. I believe, looking at it, it was around $12,000. Is that correct, Flora?
I am reviewing that for you.
Okay.
Yep, it's exactly $12,000. I don't know if you guys could still see my screen.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It was this amount here that it was budgeted for FY21. We had a budget as well for FY22, so that's why it's not there anymore.
Okay, so I'd ask you the same question, but I already know the answer when it comes to 50% of extracurriculars. That would, that would be after-school programs, that sort of thing?
Yes, what we would be, what you would be looking at is, would be no assistant coaches. We would cut the assistant coach stipends, and we would reduce the number of games that our teams engage in, because that would also reduce costs such as referees and umpires, scorekeepers, those things, and those would be the immediate byproduct of that 7,149.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. All right, so we are up to 7, 1929. About $32,000, $33,000. So you're saying that the rest of it came from the contingency, the miscellaneous line?
I put it again on the screen so you can see where it comes, everything from.
So I guess I'm, call me foolish, I'm sorry if I keep saying the same thing. How does this add up to $163,000?
George? We have the $4,000, $4,702 for Central Elementary. You have another 29,466 from Saxon River. You have from the miscellaneous, $41,789. And then you have 114,361 that you had before that was from assessments. So adding those amounts adds to the 163,320.
Okay. Jason, you had something to clear me up, did you?
Yeah, it looks, it just looks like the middle school cut from last budget, the level-funded, $22,019, and the miscellaneous is 127,278.
Okay.
From the last budget.
Okay.
To answer your question.
Thanks. All right, well. Any questions, comments for Ms. Bukowski? Any questions, comments in general?
I have a question.
Jason, go ahead. I see it, Priscilla, Jason, go ahead.
Go ahead, Jason.
So I just wanted to, so correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, because I'm still trying to figure all this out myself. I think I know the answer, but basically, when you have that budget, it's just like a big piece of the pie. And I've learned at town meetings that when things get passed or subtracted from the budget and taxpayers, that doesn't mean that it's specifically taken from that one area. So for example, say, the budget for computer paper is 1,000 bucks. If you spend $900 on computer paper, you get $100 somewhere else. So basically, the same thing could happen with extracurriculars. It just depends on where you allocate that piece of the pie. So we don't necessarily need to, that's what we're looking at at the moment as far as after-school programs, you know, stipends and half the games. So I just wanted to clarify, if I could, that question.
I can give you a little bit more information that, yeah, pretty much it's overall the bottom line. Once a budget's approved here, we're saying, the administration, you are required to operate the schools under the budget that was approved, the bottom line. And so that means there, there may be some, you know, you know, we don't spend all the money on paper, so it goes somewhere else to pick up, you know, maybe pick up technology or something. technology or something. But within that, we all, we do still try to stay within each line item. And anytime that we're going to overspend a line item by a certain amount, that has to be approved by the board. But overall, for the board, it's the bottom line. And once it's approved, the taxpayers are pretty much saying to the administration, we want you to run our schools based in this budget. And as long as at the end of the day, your budget is still within what we approved, that's pretty much the game plan for that, Jason. I hope that answered your question.
It does, thanks. I appreciate that. And, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Priscilla, go ahead. You're on mute.
I know, I'm trying to unmute. Let's see where to start. Last week, the budget of $10,849,299 was up about $300,000 from what the principals had told us two weeks ago they could work with and be okay with. We asked last week that they take $163,000 out. I thought that was out of the $10,849. So if you've taken $163,000 out of, instead of the $10,849, and gone back to the $10,888, which was the budget for '21, you've already been able to increase your budget up by about $40,000, and then only drop it down $124,000. So every time that we need, the budget increases before you take anything out. What surprises me is the fact that you told us two weeks ago you could live with the $10, I think it was 500 something thousand. And now we're up to $10,725,452. So that's my start. That's a little disappointing and a little disconcerting that you didn't at least try that. I have questions on the speech and audiology that's put in this regular budget. Isn't that, doesn't speech and audiology come under WNESU? All of those are hired there, and so that would be an assessment back to us. Doesn't that go under assessment?
Priscilla, I can tell you that I have three students that have 504s that receive, that are, have hearing devices, et cetera. And the assessment that they have do come out of my budget, not the WNESU budget, because they are not IEP students. They are 504 or EST students.
Okay, and so that is definitely straight from your budget.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I appreciate that. The other question I got is.
Right, Priscilla, I think, I think Carrie was also trying to reply.
Yeah, hang on, Priscilla, go ahead.
So the same thing as what Karen said, thank you for Central. We also have two students that are 504 students under speech and audiology that are not covered under Student Services for Assessments. And that comes directly out of our budget.
Yeah. And that would carry over to the psych services too, I'm sure. So that kind of answered that question for me. Karen, in looking at yours, I'm seeing tech supplies, related supplies at $50,500. What is that being used for?
Replacing Promethium boards, Chromebooks, all of the basic instructional technology pieces that we deal with. It also, you know, would cover repair, you know, we do have a number of repairs of Chromebooks, et cetera.
And that's logical. It just, it seemed like a really high number when we were talking about all the tech stuff that you got this year, so.
And I, and I understand that. What you need to, what you probably aren't aware of is, when I started at BFMS, they had smart boards that were already two and three years old. And those are slowly dying, and we're replacing them with Promethium boards. And, you know, those, depending on how we buy them, et cetera, they, it is expensive to replace them, but they are an essential piece of instruction.
Okay. Then, these may have to be questions for Flora, I'm not sure. But I'm looking at the the last page, there's two pages on my printouts. The last orange section and the first green section. You have early education of $178,000 tuition on the orange section. Then again, in the assessment, you've got $113,000 for early ed. Can you explain that? So you're saying we have $113,000? Yeah, right there. That's, that's under the assessment. And then up in the orange section, you've got a line item of early ed that $178,140. I just didn't know what those were.
Yeah, that's tuition to the private Vermont Leas. So they're different. They're not, and then the early ed is a pre-K that we have at the superintendent's office area. So it's not the same thing. It's different.
Okay, so what is the orange one then? What does that, what does that involve?
Titles, and the account titles, it says, that's on the private tuitions, Leas.
And what are those?
So that is.
Private preschools outside of the SU.
Okay, and we don't have ones within the SU that these children could go to?
We do, but it's parents' choice.
Such as the Montessori as an example out in Saxon River, I believe. Is that right? Yeah.
And we're paying for all of those?
Yep.
Now, is that, is that something, hang on, Priscilla, so just to, for clarity, that's a similar situation to the, let's say, the kids that choose to go to Compass School. Is that right?
Yes.
That's a little different. Yeah, it's, it's similar, but they're both fruits, but it's, it's a little different because, you know, parents have the right to send their kids where, you know, pretty much open book in regards to where they go for preschool. So it's similar. I guess you could look at it that way.
And why, where, why is that choice given if we can provide adequately for them?
State statute.
Okay. You know, statutes, so we can look at that.
I don't have the number off the top of my head, no. I would look, start looking at 166. I would start looking at, I would start looking at 166 in that area.
Okay. My next question is on this bond, long-term debt. It shows $723,000 and something budgeted this year, and nothing having been paid. Is, is that a yearly thing? Because it's in the year before, in the budget for '21, and in the next budget. So is that each year? And how many years is that for?
Well, I think the loan is owed to the year 2032, if I'm not mistaken. And there's different amounts, but that's the overall amount. And that gets paid twice a year. So it just gets into different amounts or two different lump sums that they sent us.
Next question is, I'm seeing a school nurse SU assessment. There's an SU assessment on there. Why is there, why is that an SU assessment for us?
Because that's a floating nurse. It's a, it's a floating nurse. It's an SU level position that assists the school nurses when they're out, prior to COVID, when they're out, so they could do professional development. If they're out sick, we had that nurse to cover their areas. Currently, under COVID right now, the SU nurse is the lead, that schedules and organizes all the teacher COVID tests as well. So that's, that's why it's an SU position.
So wouldn't that be in the SU assessments rather than in, in the orange section here?
Well, you have local nurses and you have the SU nurse. You have, you have the SU nurse, which is in the SU assessment, and then you still have to pay for your, your local nurses out of your own budget.
Yes, but this is an SU assessment one that's listed here.
No, it is labeled that way, but everything is under just one bucket. That's why. It's just, it's not split. That, that's all it is.
Can you clarify that for a second? Hang on, Priscilla. Clarify that for a second. It, it's not split? Does that mean the total amount is not split?
No, no, that is the nurse that is allocated to the schools. That's not the SU nurse itself. It's just a portion of it, yes. It's just not.
Thank you. Anything more, Priscilla?
Those were basically my questions, I guess.
Very good.
I guess, I'd like to know why, why it went up at 300 and some thousand dollars from one time to the next, when we had actually asked about cutting that one originally, and then, and it increased last time, and.
I think, I think last time, we heard some of the reasons why it increased. I know one of them was the additional educational need at Central. I think there was a couple others. I, I can't recall the details, but I remember hearing about some specific reasons why it did go up. I mean, Chris or Flora, you know, somebody can chime in if you want, but I think that's, that's how I recalled that increase, because I think we all questioned it last meeting as well.
Yeah, I, I, you know.
We questioned it, but I thought that was on the, the one that was, that was $10,500 something.
Hang on, Priscilla.
And last time, it went up again.
Hang on, Priscilla, if you're, if you're gonna talk, because somebody else is trying to explain too. So just, just give a quick second first, okay? Thanks, Chris. You were gonna say something?
Yeah, the board's, you know, overall, you know, we're getting into a lot of different line items, but overall, the board directed the administration to propose, to propose another budget that was 1.5% less than the previous one. And that's, and that's what we did. That's what the 163. Just because certain line items might have went up, the bottom line is, the administration did exactly what the board had asked, write it down 1.5%. Does that mean within the budgets, line items are gonna change? Yes, but the bottom line is, the 1.5% below budget was presented tonight.
And I think it's good to understand some of those items that Priscilla's asked about, but as I mentioned last time, you know, we, our job, I don't believe, is to dig down in the weeds. And some of those, though, I thought they're great questions and enlightening questions. But, you know, I think Chris's comment is pretty accurate, that, you know, we asked for something and it's provided. And now we just trying to get an understanding of what that means, for me personally, and what it means to, to the kids. I know it's a hard hit. Any, before I go further into another tangent, anybody else have, have any other comments, questions? Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I figured I'd say it now. I mean, moving forward, I just wanted the, the board to keep in mind is that, like I said at the beginning, as an administration, we're still asking that the board approve the budget that we proposed at the last board meeting. And if the budget needs to be cut further, you know, in the past and other issues, then the, then the voters can vote down the budget, and additional cuts will be made. But if you accept this budget that was presented tonight with 1.5% less, if the town comes back and says they want to cut more, I don't really, to be honest, I really don't know where those cuts are gonna be made. We're really gonna be, there's, there's no buffer room at all. Right now, there's no buffer room, but we're giving what you guys are asked. But the town could always come back, not approve the budget, and say they want additional cuts. And, you know, so I just wanted everyone to look at the, the big picture in regards to what we're looking here tonight.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Any, before I go off on another tangent, anybody? Priscilla, go ahead.
Um, I'd like to comment on the, what we'd asked, the 1.5. And I understand what you did. You took the $10,888 and reduced it by 1.5. I believe what we asked you to do was take the $10,849, which was the budget that was at the last meeting, and take the 163 out of it, which would have ended up with $10,685. I think the $10,725 is a good compromise for that. And, you know, and I definitely could support that. I could also, I think I say that at least to the taxpayers, that I had done, done due diligence and reduced their budget by a little bit. I do know people are really out there looking for a, for cuts. And I think that's why the board asked you last time to do some cuts. I do understand why you took, you know, why you took the other figure instead, and that's, you know, and so that way, came up with a little higher. I can also see how the teach, the staff has done that. But I do think that, you know, as you move stuff around, I think that there will be money to be able to support the students and do a good job. So that's where I would be at on it.
I think the language, and somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the language of what we asked for was based off of the 10, 888, whatever the number was.
It may have been, and it may be my mistake.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was pretty clear, because we, we were discussing that number.
Yes, it was 10, 887, 996. And 1.5% of that was 163, 319.94, and we rounded to 320. So we did, we did took the 1.5% from what you guys asked for, which it was 10, 887, 996.
Yeah, I think, I think that was, I think that was okay. The, well, let me rephrase that. I think that what they did was accurate to our request. And I could be wrong, but that's how I, how I recalled it.
George, I think, I think you're totally right, and I stand corrected. And I had said earlier today that, you know, the board, they did exactly what we said. So, you know, I felt good about the having done that.
Yeah, so. Some, I just wanted to point out a couple of numbers that I crunched earlier. And it was, just as an enlightenment portion for everybody listening. The, the benefits increase this year was, was pretty significant. It sounds like it was pretty significant last year, right? Is that, that, I think you sent the board, Chris, you sent the board something from the, from the state. And it offered a avenue to send something to them to say, you know, this is crazy. But I just wanted to put it into perspective here. The increase in benefits for Saxon's River was 6%. Central Elementary was 10%. And the middle school was 9%. That's an average, the total dollar average was 5.4%. I don't have the total here, but that's actually, the total is actually 14% of our budget, which is pretty huge.
Flora has the total, I believe. We did that, we did some math earlier, so.
So that's just one area that, that, you know, put our backs against the wall here. And I intend to fill out that letter and send it to the appropriate people. I just wanted to put that out there for, for context. Me personally. You know, the miscellaneous line, that's where everything seems to need to come from. And that's been reduced pretty good, and it is, no, I shouldn't say pretty good, it's been reduced. Could it be reduced more? I don't know. I don't do it for a living, but the, the insurance, the, the benefits portion of it was a large increase. And I just wanted to point that out. Any other discussion on the, any of the changes from the level funded to the 1.5% decrease? And then I'd like to move into. And we may circle, we're probably gonna circle back to that, but want to move into some of the other things, because I think it'll add clarity, at least, at least for me. Do we know what we have in total? How much? Do we know what we have in total? How much we have in total in capital reserves? What is the total that we have? Do we know that number? Um, I I heard Ms. Kennedy say that some got taken out of capital budget. I ask because we have some that was applied in previous years to capital, so I'm assuming that that capital is in a separated somehow? Even if it's distributed amongst the school? Did that question make any sense at all?
Yeah, he's gonna give Flora a couple minutes to call it up.
Three hundred and fifty thousand put in capital reserves in two thousand nineteen and another hundred thousand in two thousand twenty, so there should be some. I don't know how much before that.
Well, well, that's kind of where I'm what I'm getting.
May have been taken out.
George, she said that she took out seven thousand, fifty-five dollars out of the capital reserve.
Yeah, I'm wondering what the total is. What do we have for capital? A total, because I'm seeing these previous um, articles that are, you know, adding mon- money into that capital reserve fund. Just wondering what that, what's that capital reserve fund look like? Is it? You know, have we used? I know we use probably use some here and there. And I and I don't even know if that I don't know if that needs to be. So, Chris, our deadline is prior to, uh, as David Clark said, our deadline was coming up pretty quick, right? Like, we maybe have been beyond it slightly.
Which deadline are you talking about, George?
When we have to have stuff to the town.
We're right now, we're right on the line. I think we have maybe right now, maybe. Yeah, we're we're right at the line right now. I I think we have maybe one day to spare, but not much.
So it goes back to my question of do um, whose decision is it whether we want to extend our you know, extend the, you know, from extend our portion of town meeting day to a later date? Is that our decision or is that?
I'm I'm trying to look through uh, H forty-eight right now to give you. Let's see, um, intent and purpose. It is the intent of the General Assembly that the citizens of Vermont should be able to protect their health, safety and welfare while also continuing to exercise their rights to participate in annual municipal meetings according accordingly, the purpose of this act is to permit municipalities to move their date of the two twenty twenty-one meeting, potentially to a later ba- date, permit municipalities to mail out twenty twenty-one annual meeting, early voter absentee ballots, authorize the Secretary of State to order supplemental.
Yeah, I read I read it a couple of times today, too, and it I wasn't clear on whether that was um you know, a townwide thing or if that was individual.
Talks about municipalities and you mean the schools one and the towns another, you know, so based on, you know, like I said, in the past, the uh we could use the Wyndham South, the Wyndham Unified Elementary School District as a good example is that they didn't vote on the school budget during town meeting day. They had to set have to have a separate vote later on, so.
Okay.
That's the best answer I could give you right now is that if they did it then, I'm sure that's what we're talking about now is that um, the school budget wouldn't be voted on 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 um, town meeting day. It'd be voted on at a later date, which means um, you know, you're not really sharing the costs of the having a separate meeting, but I'd, like I said, I have to read more into H forty-eight because I really um, couldn't give you a solid answer on that, George.
David Clark, go ahead. I'll I'll let let you speak.
With your with your boards leave, I I would ask your board if there are any objections.
Any objections? Uh, yeah, thanks. Appreciate the guidance there. Any objections to allowing Mr. Clark to say a few words? Floor's yours, Mr. Clark.
Having read through uh, H forty-eight, it's four pages, June is the latest you can schedule a meeting.
Okay, thank you. So, uh, Flora, are you able to uh ah, hit the wrong button. Flora, are you able to get a capital reserve fund figure for us? You're muted.
So, um, I don't have the overall, like, how much it is in reserve, but what has been for the two schools right now is thirty-one thousand?
That is what is budgeted out of the capital reserve fund for two schools?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right, at some point, we're gonna need to know what's left in that fund.
Well, I know right now, um, I think it's Carrie that she has some um, project um, because they got audit on the playground and I know that needs to be fixed, but I don't know all the ins and outs of her project.
Yeah, yeah, so I I'm thinking of what's 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 the what's left in the account, what the, for lack of a better.
Yeah, I'll had to run a report to have the final numbers and take into consideration um, Carrie's um, expectations on fixing the playground and how much she thinks that will cost them.
Yeah, that's exactly. Kind of just wanna know what's the balance in that fund reserve. Um, Priscilla, you had a hand up?
Yeah, um, the problem is that if we um, are ready, when the town is ready, then we have to split the costs and it costs us quite a lot of money. So I think probably what we want to do is be ready, then if the town does delay, we can also delay. But I think at this point, to make a decision, you know, to delay tonight would not be a good, and I think we need to be as ready as possible.
Appreciate that. Thanks. Okay, so we're gonna end up meeting that. Well, so so here's the reason why for my for that question was if we have let's say we have a million dollars in capital reserves, then we're probably not gonna take uh, money from our surplus this year and apply it to that. This is the, that was the the reason for my for my question. Uh, what's next? So we had one of these previous years, we had uh, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight thirteen cents surplus applied to FY twenty twenty-two. How is that reflected in this budget? It's probably not listed in here. Is that correct?
Yeah, surplus is not listed on the budget.
Okay, so we have that that was set for this uh, for FY twenty twenty-two. I don't think, I don't think there was any more. Priscilla, do you remember any?
I believe the surplus was set for FY twenty-three, not twenty-two.
There's another one for FY twenty-three. I got that right here, too.
Yeah, and there's twenty-two is a hundred thousand, right? Wasn't it?
Twenty-two, one hundred and seventy-one, six eighty.
One six, yeah. A hundred thousand was set for twenty twenty-three, but there's another one that was set for the current year, which was two hundred thousand. So there's two hundred thousand being applied to our current budget.
Twenty, FY twenty-one, right?
Right.
Okay, so that one seventy-one, six eighty-eight. How do, how do we know? All right, so that's projected surplus amount to be put toward uh, tax relief. What if that?
George is last year's surplus, so she should be able to give us that exact figure so that we can put that into articles.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not there yet. I got that on my list. I'm not quite there yet. I'm wondering, so that number must be um uh, it's not necessarily gonna be exact at the end of the year is what I'm saying. If we overspend or even underspend, somewhere there's either less or extra. Does that? Does that make sense? I mean, if we have a surplus, a projected surplus of two hundred thousand and we say we're gonna stick one hundred into, or we're gonna stick the whole thing into um um, to another year's budget. Well, if we spend, if we don't have that much surplus at the end, then we're not gonna be putting that much into that budget, right?
No, George, we have that amount. The amount that we're voting, that we put in there for the voters is based on last year, twenty twenty, okay? Can tell us that exact amount, then we take that amount and we put it into articles.
I'm asking, I'm asking about, I'm asking for procedural purposes because projected budget is not going to be what the end is. It's gonna maybe close, but it's not gonna be the end is, so if there's a difference there, what happens to that is my question.
That's the surplus, that that's we're told at the end of the year. And that we get to put in next year's thing.
The end of the year isn't until June.
Right. We're not voting on that now. We're voting on what we've got for the surplus from last year.
Priscilla, I know. I get that. I'm not talking about any specific year. I'm saying if we vote to put a hundred thousand of a surplus to another year, well, what if we don't have a hundred thousand surplus after the year actually completes?
You do have a hundred thousand because it comes from the previous. It comes from, and it's put in a reserve fund to go for that year. That doesn't mean at the end of fiscal twenty-one, the hundred, the money that was put in there for twenty twenty-one. Whatever it was, but that doesn't mean this hundred and seventy-one thousand is six hundred and eighty-eight that's put in there for next year, twenty twenty-two, that we'll still have that amount at the end of fiscal twenty twenty-two. We may have a different amount. But then it'll be the surplus from that year that we vote on for the next year.
Exactly, so.
Money is in a reserve fund and it goes towards those things to reduce the people's taxes for that year.
All right, so hang on a second. Pause, pause for a second. I understand that. I get that completely, but that number is potentially gonna be different than what's reflected on the article that we write.
No.
We're writing the article before the end of the year.
No, you're ma- writing the article based on last year, the surplus that she's telling you she had last year. At the end of June last year. That's what we're writing the article on. That we have, that we know, or that we should know. It should be, it's a set amount. It's based on last year.
All right, so we're we're driving everybody crazy. I'm gonna ask one more thing. So what you're telling me is that the surplus we have for FY twenty-one, we are not making a decision on that tonight?
They, we already know that. That was last year. Oh, no, 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 we're not making a decision on twenty-one, right. We're making decision on twenty twenty surplus. We don't know twenty twenty-one surplus. You're right.
That's what I'm asking.
Surplus. And that's what we're making a decision on and what we're putting in the articles.
Okay, hang on. Chris, you got something to say that probably would clear me right up?
So at the end of this this current school year, twenty twenty-one, when everything's closed out, we'll know what the surplus is. Whatever that surplus is, that's what we'll be talking about in putting in the articles this time next year.
Perfectly clear. Thank you. All right, well, there goes that. So what are we talking about for those articles from last year? What are we talking about for the surplus? Not from the articles from last year, but what is the articles, what is what is the surplus that we're deciding upon this year?
The twenty twenty surplus to go into the articles that we're talking about tonight. That's what you want, right?
I wanna know whatever we are making decisions on, so yes.
So, Flora, do you have the um, numbers for the twenty twenty sur?
I don't have the numbers for that. I could get them, but I would have to run the reports of the revenues and expenses that we have so we could calculate those ones. I I actually had sent those ones to um, George already. Um, revenue and expenses report for that.
No, those are the audit that we did for fiscal twenty twenty.
Priscilla, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Priscilla, you you can't just start talking. If you raise your hand and then, because other people are trying to talk too and it's I can't hear everybody at once. So don't just jump in. Just give a, give a, put a finger up or something and and you, I'll get, I'll get you right at, right after it. Okay, so so we need, we need that number as well. Okay.
But you don't need those numbers to approve the budget, though.
Right, I'm just trying to get as much out of the way as possible. While we can. Per pupil spending, do we have uh, final figures from the state? I've tried looking through stuff and I'm 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 all over the place and don't fully understand. Do we have what that looks like yet? I didn't know if some of them, some of the stuff that I read looked like they were examples and not actuals. I guess that will depend on what we finalize for a budget, right?
Um, I, we did send a um, an email to the state um, regarding the um, pupils for um everybody, because for some reason, the numbers, we have issues with them. It does not match. So they were um, reviewing those ones. So um, the list that we got, it was a preliminary, not a final one, but we did submit um, uh, whatever we had to the state because we needed to have um, the the pupil number and the um, tuition allowance. And by last Friday. So we did go with um, those numbers.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so um, so to answer your question, no, we don't have that yet. They sent us the, like, like Flora said, they sent us the per pupil numbers um, for each district and they were off. You know, those of you who were around last year, we we saw the same thing. For whatever reason, the the pure people counts were different than what we submitted. And so it was either Thursday or Friday of last week, uh, we resubmitted those numbers for accuracy. So once we get those back, we should be able to get the uh, the cost back, but um, until they give us the correct numbers, we don't have that, what you're looking for right now. What's the waiting from?
Uh, okay. So all right, I guess I don't have, anybody else have any more questions, comments? I'm um so regardless of whether we regardless of whether we um, extend our time or not, um I think we should look at one of these budgets for to 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 vote on. The the school administration and and superintendent are suggesting they they're recommending the initial, um, I'm gonna call a level funded budget. I guess I'll look for a motion if uh, if if we're if we're ready for that. I'll look for a motion to I'll look for a motion to approve the level funded budget as presented. Uh, I don't have the exact dollar figure and um we can go from there. Some some motion, just Jason, go ahead.
George, aren't we approving the budget for the one point five percent decrease? You're you're said level funded.
That's what they asked asked us to consider, so that's why I went that route first. If you wanted to, it's up to up to the board. I mean, I I'd I'd entertain any motion right now, either way. I mean, those are the two budgets we're looking at, so. Priscilla, go ahead.
Jason, you can make that motion for this ten million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two if you want to.
Well, I I just like to comment, I I just, as my friend Stephen Fine would say, what are we doing here? We asked them to decrease it by one point five percent. They did that. Let's vote on it and let's let the uh, taxpayers do what they will.
Well, if you recall, we we had them put that together and the verbiage was such that we could see it and 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 ask about what the impacts are associated with it, so um, it wasn't uh, cut it and we'll vote on that. If that's what we wanna do, that's up to the board. So, I'm I'm gonna leave it to to one of you folks if you wanna make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget of ten million uh, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars, which they decreased it by one point five percent from a level funded last week.
Priscilla tells me I don't need a second. Any discussion? I think uh, I'll I'll add to the discussion before we put to the vote. I think uh I'll I'll add to the discussion before we put to the vote. I think the one point five percent is a um. It's a. I don't want to use the word lightly insignificant in the grand scheme of things. It is a gesture to the townsfolk is is how I see it. If that's gonna impact student um. Student um. Educational experience, extracurricular experience, emotional experience um. In any way, I don't think it's worth it. Um, that's me personally. Any other discussion? Looks like we're ready to vote. Priscilla, anything else?
I'd like to just say that I think that that is a token amount to say to the taxpayers. And as such, I think they're more likely to go for it, and I do not want to present a budget out there that I think. It has a chance of failing because then we could be looking at far greater cuts. And I I do think that by moving funds around um our our staff and our teachers and our administration. Are wonderful in being able to take care of our students. I think this budget will will be okay. Uh, if it was a wonderful, great year, I'd love to give them even more, but. You know, I'm just. I'm just leery of what I'm hearing from taxpayers.
Thank you, Priscilla. And I feel the same thing. Personally, I don't think one and a half percent is gonna make or break a deal at town time, but um it's not up to me, so. Uh, any other discussion before we move to a vote? Hearing none. Priscilla, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jason Terry.
Yes.
Jason Benson.
Yes.
The yeses have it. So ten million seven hundred and twenty five thousand four hundred and fifty two is the approved budget. By the Rocking School Board. Uh, anything else we need have available to talk about prior to adjourning? We need the capital reserve. Fund total figure and. The figure for uh the surplus that we would be discussing for. Potential application of um upcoming years. Or to capital reserve or whatever whatever we want to do with it. And what was the other thing? We're still waiting for per pupil spending.
I could give out the estimate tomorrow, give you the whatever we have for them, because we did submit um the tuition allowance for FY twenty two using that number.
Okay, so so. Okay, thanks. Um, so we're gonna have to vote on these and I'm assuming we're gonna have to vote on them very soon, right? If we're if we're intending to stay in line with. The current um. Plan of things if the. You know, we can move out later or the town, if they push it out, we'll fall in line with them, I guess. That seems to be. The vibe I'm getting from this board, so um we're gonna need those figures as soon as those those concrete figures as soon as possible, so we can uh. Start working on articles. Um, anything else?
George?
Yeah.
I would say within the next couple of days, either Wednesday or Thursday, we're gonna have to have another quick meeting to approve the articles.
Yep.
Thursday, Thursday, Thursday.
All right, well, what's the schedule look like?
You have Wednesday or Thursday. Wednesday, Thursday apply them. I would say you'd want to um shoot for Thursday the latest.
What else we got this week?
You or me?
Any of us.
George, I have something, George.
Yeah, go ahead.
How long will it take Flora to put that those numbers together? Could we take a quick break and just do it tonight?
Um, we could do that if you guys want that. If not, I can have it by tomorrow morning, because it's just running some reports from E finance and and putting the numbers together.
Never mind. I'll have it accurate.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning, um as well, we do have um some draft from the auditor, so that will help as well.
George, why don't we shoot for Thursday?
Okay, Thursday, five thirty to discuss articles.
Yep, we just uh sent. Send Nicole an email.
Um, the other thing we do need to know is we need to know um the tuition rate.
You know, I have that. I don't know why I didn't say it. I have that written here. So yeah, yeah, we have to, I'm not sure the procedure for that, but we have to. That's that's for us to come up with.
I do have that. That was.
Okay. All right, so Chris, go ahead.
You could put that on the agenda for Thursday either. Keep the same tuition rate or raise it, but that that could be another agenda item with um approve the articles and um. Tuition rate. I mean, I think it I think at this point, if you're. I would I would recommend it's it's not too often that tuition rates go up and down. Most boards usually keep them the same year to year. And based on this year, I don't see any anticipation of why you would change the tuition rate. You would just keep it the same.
We certainly wouldn't want to raise it, right? Isn't that we we pay that, is that right?
Oh, i- it was what if we had out of district people coming into um our buildings, that's what they would pay.
Oh.
The catch twenty two.
Right.
If it's too high, they don't come. If it's too low. They may not come.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Okay, so uh we this was actually originally planned for scheduled for a regular board meeting. Uh, we gotta get that scheduled too, and I'd like to. Well, before we get. Get to that. Well, let's just do it now. When when can we meet again? Flora, go ahead.
Uh, for the um, the the pupil amounts, we have four ninety four point eighty seven. And for the tuition is nineteen thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars. That's the allowable tuition um report that we submitted on last Friday, the fifteenth.
Can you say those two numbers one more time for me?
Okay, so um, the pupil number that you were asking is four nine four point eighty seven, eight seven.
Good.
That was according to last report we got from the state. And then um according to that number, the um allowable tuition is nineteen. Nine, three, two. And but that was uh with the budget being um ten, ten point seven, twenty four, six seventy six.
All right, so we'll get those adjustments corrected and we'll get that for next time. So. Nineteen nine thirty two, is that what we're, when I'm looking at the previous um articles, I'm seeing a. Education spending of nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty one. Is that the nineteen nine thirty two? Is that the comparable number for that? Okay. Okay, so we need to get back on a regular schedule um for regular meetings. We haven't had one in a long time. Tonight was supposed to be that, but the budget was obviously more important at this time, so. Let me pull up a calendar real quick.
George?
I'm gonna.
That's the equalized per pupil amount. That's not the tuition that we approved. The tuition that we approved is down around sixteen thousand, I think. It if you want, that can be found out. You need to find out that tuition number, because we have to vote on that.
Okay, so. Separate thing.
We can't do anything about that.
So the equalized pupil, per equalized pupil amount. We're saying is four hundred ninety four dollars and eighty seven cents?
No, that's that's.
It looked to me like I had three heads.
That's the number of pupils. The nineteen.
Oh.
Nine ninety thirty two is the per equalized pupil.
Yeah, it's a calculation.
Based on the budget.
Yeah.
That we just passed, but we do need to know how much tuition was last year so that we can approve that, like Mr. Pratt was saying. It usually doesn't go up or down much and it's not necessarily based on the. Pupils, it's based on, you know, what we've had.
All right, thank you for that clarity. All right, so that's uh, I think we've kicked this horse enough. So I was I was on a calendar for. Next regular scheduled board meeting. I'd like probably to do on the next Monday. I think it's off of our normal. Schedule, but we haven't had one since the beginning of December, so. Is everybody okay with that?
You're looking at the twenty fifth, George?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Are are we meeting on Thursday?
Yes, that's budget related. The twenty fifth would be a regular scheduled, a regular meeting, because we haven't had one in six weeks.
That's true, and we but we would also have one scheduled on the first.
Well, that's.
Up to you, George.
Well, I don't know. Well, here's the thing. I don't really want to go another week without one, but I don't want to have to necessarily have two weeks in a row, so maybe we could. If they don't have anything going, we could skip that one and just pick up on the third. I can't do the first anyway, that's right, because it's my daughter's birthday.
Oh, okay. The twenty fifth is also the high school. I don't know if they'll have a meeting or not. Is it the fourth Thursday?
Yeah. That's fine with me.
We're gonna go, I think. Well, you'll have to choose one or the other, Priscilla.
It's up to you, George.
Yeah, I think the twenty fifth. Let's do the twenty fifth for a regular scheduled meeting. There's several items that we need to. Get to there. Um, I'll I'll work with Nicole to get an agenda out and um and we will be back here Thursday night at five thirty to. Go over articles and um hopefully put a nail in this um. This part of the coffin here. Does that sound acceptable to everybody here? Very good. Um, director's comments, Mr. Benson. Hang on just a second real quick before you go. Ms. Kennedy, were you motioning to say something?
I just wanted to clarify because I know Priscilla had asked if it was Act one sixty six for the universal pre K, just in case you wanted to look that up.
Awesome, thanks. Mr. Benson, you're up. Director's comments.
Well, hopefully our staff and our general public can wrap their heads around this budget we've approved tonight. I know that. It's been a struggle for everybody involved to. Come up with something that's gonna work for both sides, but we will see what happens come town meeting and. Forwards. Good luck.
Thank you, sir. Jason Terry, go ahead.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Priscilla.
Thank you, administration and everybody for those hard decisions. I know they're difficult. And we all want the best to the students. That makes it harder.
Thank you, Priscilla. Um, yeah, I don't have anything long drawn out tonight. Just thanks, guys. Thanks um Flora, Chris and uh. Carrie, Laura and Karen. Thank you, guys. Um, and we'll see you all Thursday. Motion to adjourn. I say motion to adjourn. Priscilla, uh. Look, it is six fifty three. You're adjourned. Everybody in favor, say good night.